Okay, good evening everybody at six oh two P M. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Summerfield Planning Board. I am Mike Capuano. I'm the chairman of the planning board with me tonight is our vice chair Amelia Aboff, our clerk, Jahan Habib and our members Lynn Richards and Michael McNeely. The planning board has a quorum. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, this meeting of the planning board is being conducted via remote participation. The video recording of the proceedings will be available on the city website or by emailing planning at summerma.gov. They do want to give a quick reminder to members of the public. Because we've noticed some deviation from from the policies of planning board and most municipal boards who are in attendance. If you want to share a comment in testimony, please state your your name and your street of residence and the city of residence for the record at the beginning of your testimony. We don't need your actual street address. If you want to give it more than fine, but we 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 do ask for at least your street and and city of residence for the testimony. Okay, we have a one matter of other business, which is the minutes approval. On November seventh, twenty twenty four, has everybody had a chance to take a look? Does anybody have any suggestions, revisions? Let's email you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I noted a revision to Steve by email ahead of the meeting. So is that the version that we're voting on?
Steve, I know. I know you and I discussed this earlier. Have you made the modification that Amelia had suggested earlier?
I have made the modification. The version you all have is the unmodified version. So if you want to, just for the, you know, just for the record to vote on it with the modified modification as described by Amelia, that'd probably be probably the right thing to do.
Yep. Amelia, do you mind for the purpose of everybody's votes, letting them know what your modification, their proposed modification was?
Yep, there was an commenter whose address was included in the minutes in the draft minutes who had verbalized a desire not to have her address shared. And so we've just made that we've redacted that, I guess, in the revision.
I'm comfortable with that. I do recall that that person's comment and and concern particularly for the disclosure of their location. With that in mind, does anybody else have any comments or questions that they want to raise before we move on this? Seeing done, the chair moves to adopt the draft meeting minutes as amended. Seconded by Amelia, Steve, can you please call the roll?
Sure, Jahan Jahan Habib.
Hi.
Michael McNeely.
Hi.
Lynn Richards. Oh, when I know.
Hi.
Amelia Aboff.
Hi.
And Michael Capuano.
Hi. We have meeting minutes. Fantastic. We have a request for a continuance from forty five Mistake in the December nineteenth meeting. The chair moves to continue forty five Mistake after the nineteenth, seconded by Amelia. Steve, please call the roll.
Jahan Habib. Jahan, the audio didn't come through for me.
Hi.
There you go. Michael McNeely.
Hi.
Lynn Richards.
Hi.
Amelia Abah.
Hi.
And Michael Capuano.
I agenda item is continued. We have a request from seven twenty to seven twenty two Broadway. Continue to the December nineteenth meeting. Chair moves to continue that agenda item seconded by Amelia. Steve, roll call, please.
Jahan Habib.
Hi.
Michael McNeely.
Hi.
Lynn Richards.
Hi.
Amelia Abah.
Hi.
And Michael Capuano.
I that agenda item is continued. So the planning board's agenda this evening for everybody else who's here, those are kind of our administrative tasks. We have a public hearing that has previously been opened, which is seventy one to seventy two Union Square. We're going to take that up in a moment. We also will then at six thirty recess from this meeting and reconvene as a joint hearing with the land use committee for a number for for two agenda items. And when those are done, we will it may time dependent because the planning board doesn't pick up new business after nine P M. But I can't. I really hope that the two small agenda items on the ladies committee won't run till nine o'clock. We will reconvene as the planning board and likely take up the next agenda item, which would be twenty to twenty three Cummings Street, which is a new case, but for the purpose of the record, I will ask Jahan to please read into the record the notice of public hearing for the Coming Street case, just because they are legally obligated to be at least ready and formally open tonight.
Sure, Mr. Chair. Twenty dash twenty three Cummings Street Z P two four dash zero 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 four six. Great Star Development East LLC proposes a master plan in the Assembly Square Mixed Use A S M D Special District, which requires a master plan special permit. Twenty dash twenty three Cummings Street Z P two four dash zero 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 eight five. Great Star Development East LLC seeks waivers from dimensional standards for building height, floor area ratio and front setback, posing occupancy of commercial space greater than ten thousand square feet in leasable floor area in the Assembly Square Mixed Use District and modifications to the provisions of section eleven point two motor vehicle parking, all of which requires a special permit.
Okay, thanks, Jahan. We are not taking coming straight up yet. We did need to open formally open the case and have it read in. And so presumably we have the appropriate time after land use committee has concluded their joint hearing with us, we will reconvene and and take them up for at least a presentation and probably some public testimony. But in the intervening twenty minutes, we do have attorney Sullivan with us who represents the applicant in in Union Square at seventy one to seventy two. This is a case that so if you wouldn't mind, just, you know, bug me yourself and introducing yourself to the for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Walter Sullivan, attorney Walter Sullivan, on behalf of Union Leaf, and we are here seeking a modification of our special permit.
Yes, thank you very much. And for members of the public and members of the board, this applicant came before us a period of months ago with this request for for a modification of relief. And we had, for various reasons, continued them until this evening. And so I don't think we need a recitation of of presentation again. We've heard it. We've discussed it. And so I I'm happy to start. Testimony is closed on this. So I'm happy to have any further discussion by and among members of the board of the applicant or of staff as we look forward to hopefully getting through this agenda item the next twenty minutes or so. Does anybody have any thoughts or questions or comments?
Um.
Yes.
Um, since I'm relatively new to this particular issue, since it was continuance continued, can and I and so I actually read read it all and going back to the June, I think, June twenty four information. Can someone explain to me why there was a sense of disrupting the pedestrian flow by moving from appointment only to walk in? So it's the first time that I've kind of seen that, like interrupting the pedestrian flow, like traffic, I understood, et cetera, et cetera. But that I I stumbled a little bit on. And if somebody could share whether you or Walter, but if somebody could explain to to me a little bit more on that, I'd appreciate it.
I I I'll give you a very, very brief background on the way the planning board has handled cases involving cannabis facilities. We've had uniform conditions that go back a number of of years when they started coming in. And this this is one of them. And what we were looking to to do is to see if it makes sense to modify those standard conditions for this applicant and potentially others as well. So that's one of the factors that that we want to look at.
And so I understood that, Michael. And one of the reasons why it was a uniform condition was because, and I quote, it was going to, there was the potential for up disrupting pedestrian flow. And that's where I'm stumbling upon. I understand the bigger issue. It it's more the mechanics of that one particular item.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Of course.
I you when some of all began taking this up, there were no store, you know, there were no stores really open throughout the state. And when the first two stores opened up, it was a nightmare. Really hadn't seen that. So I think, you know, in any of the board members, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was to ensure that there wasn't queuing outside and that the sidewalk sidewalks would be filled with people waiting to get in.
So when you say it was a nightmare, there were long queues of people blocking the pedestrian flow. Got it.
That happened in Brookline. That was the other business was really a traffic issue. But the first two open one, excuse me, I apologize, not Brooklyn, Eastham and and Lemonster or Lester, excuse me. And there was a big traffic nightmare. But after that, I think Brookline had a little bit of an issue. It's on the corner of Route nine and I think Washington Street. But I think since then, it hasn't had a problem. So I think that's part of the re that's the reason why the part of the reason the board put it in. I think since then, some of all has not seen any issue. And in fact, has allowed the businesses, although says appointment only to allow them just that someone could walk in and and ask for an appointment then. So no one's really seen any problems with it since operations that now over five hundred stores moving forward. I can't remember now if there's seven stores and that are open now in some of all. So you really haven't seen issues of crowds or anything outside stores. In fact, stores aren't act that aren't actually that filled anymore. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, the queuing, as soon as I heard queuing that there had been a problem, it was interrupting. And Amelia nodded her head. It's like that. That was the piece of history that I had been missing. So thank you.
Yep, exactly. We were worried about, you know, lines going, you know, around the block and all sorts of things. And thankfully, that that has not been the case. So there is a proposed amended condition that I don't know if you have all seen it. Obligates Union Leaf to commit annual monitoring and reporting of the walk-in customer operations model with some surveys of travel surveys of employees and customers and a status update of all traffic mobility measures, which I think is is reasonable, because we'd like to make sure that once we potentially vote in in favor of this particular application, that we have an idea of what's going on thereafter and doesn't become.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this and the members that were at the you happen to be absent at that meeting. I believe the members were looking at moving it over to the licensing commission to to provide annual reports to the licensing commission and mobility and police department would work with the licensing commission. If there was a problem, license licensing commission would 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 put appointment only back in. You know, as you may know, they're responsible as a licensing commission to set time, place and manner of how businesses operate in in the city. And I believe the the board thought that that would be a better approach instead of coming back to the planning board.
I I I believe that's right. I was not present at that meeting, but I did review the the recording and filed my affidavit. So yes, Amelia.
Chair, I think, and I have not, I was present in the meeting, but I hadn't reviewed the recording recently. So forgive me. I think the intention was for the data to go to both I I'm sorry, I don't think the data was going directly to the licensing commission. I think the licensing commission was intended to be the correct authority to make any modifications to the means of operation if there were felt to be an issue. But was the data still going to mobility and to O S P C D?
I believe it was going to mobility. I think I think that's how you set it up. I can't remember now, but I believe that's how you set it up.
This is Steve Carey in P P Z, if I may. Yes, the license commission would be, you know, maybe the more appropriate venue avenue to consider, you know, modifications to a license if some issue arose. But in terms of you know, the where the data would go, data from from this condition should the planning board apply it would go to mobility to be able to, you know, share with share with the license commission as they see fit. If, you know, if the data shows some sort of issue is coming up in, you know, pedestrian circulation, vehicle trips being generated, something along those lines. Hope that's clarifying.
Anybody have any thoughts on what 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 Steve has addressed? Are we prepared to move forward? Does anybody have any concerns in these comments? Okay. Once or twice. Okay. In that case, following public testimony, review of submitted materials and deliberation of the required considerations and findings outlined by the ordinance. I move to approve with the conditions both in the original application as well as amended tonight. The major amendment to the previously issued special permit C Z C twenty twenty dash zero 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 three nine for cannabis retail special permit in the Commercial Court District. Again, as as amended by that new condition. Seconded by Amelia. Steve, can I please have a roll call? Steve?
Apologies, I was muted. Jahan Habib.
Hi.
Michael McNeely.
Hi.
Lynn Richards.
Hi.
Amelia Abah.
Hi.
And Michael Capuano.
Hi. Congratulations. Good luck.
Mr. Chair, may I ask one question?
Uh, yeah.
Functionally, how does that work? You voted, but does it? Does the decision get? How does it actually work when they can actually start not doing appointment only?
Steve, I think that becomes official. Yeah.
Yeah. So I will, you know, as staff personnel, I'll issue a decision basically on behalf of the board that has language. It's essentially it's a it's an amended special permit. So it's essentially like a new special permit issuance. So it'd have to be recorded in the same manner. There'd be an appeal period. And then it would be recorded like any other special permit and take effect, I think, at the time of recording.
So it goes to the clerk's office, the twenty days.
Mm hmm.
Then and then at that point, they my client needs to file it with the registry and they don't and they don't have to do appointment only.
Correct.
Okay.
They would then they would now be subject to the conditions of this special permit as amended.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Of course, attorney Sullivan. Good luck with with your client.
Yes, you have a great evening, guys.
You as well. So that's great. That one was off the deck. So we have two items with land use committee that will start up within about nine minutes. And we also have Cummings Street that we will, we're not going to start now because that's, you know, that's going to be a a fulsome presentation, I expect, with some testimony. And, you know, maybe some initial discussions. We're certainly not going to vote on that, you know, this evening. But we'll at least start the discussion or at least stop the stop the testimony. So and then if if there's time, which I'm not sure that will be, maybe some review of standard conditions, but to be perfectly honest, it wouldn't, you know. I I I see that being maybe a twenty twenty five kick depending on what what we want to completely clear off of our document before the before the end of the year. So anybody else have anything that would add for the good of the meeting before we recess for another eight minutes?
Michael, since we have a little time, can I ask a question about those standard conditions? So I've reviewed them several times. And I'm not sure what like what to be. I I if you could give me some direction, like everything else that is being sent to me, it's really clear. Here's the problem. Here's the information. Here's both sides of it, et cetera. The standard conditions I'm struggling with a little bit. So I I'm happy that it we keep. We keep, you know, delaying it to the next meeting because I'm not yet prepared for it. If you could give me a little direction, I'd really appreciate it.
Sure. And and, you know, Amelia and everybody else feel free to to weigh in too. It's been a kind of a long long discussion that we've been having with with each other and with with the city staff and with the city attorneys on different ways that the planning board can become a little bit more engaged proactively in in zoning and things like that. And one of them has to do with the way that we actually operate as a board. We have always had these list of standard conditions and not that we haven't really thought about them, but they've been around for for ages. And in an effort to make sure that we're kind of doing the the right thing with, you know, the the best practices of a planning board, how we want to operate as a board, how how staff thinks that, you know, we should approach our view on applications and and permits. We're kind of going through the books and seeing, you know, does this make sense? Should we modify it? Should we add things? Should we take them away? So it's a it's a to me, it's an introspective review of the way that we condition applications to see if we still like the way we're doing what we're doing. I don't know if Amelia, I know you and I have had a lot of discussions on on this kind of in in other forums. So I don't know if you want to weigh in too and see if what I said is completely obvious.
No, I think that was great. Thank you so much for that explanation. And I'll just add, I guess, it's it's one prong of a couple of pieces that we've been looking at in terms of thinking about how the planning board can improve its processes. So it it was the one that made the most sense to start with, I think. And we have others on our aspirational list for the ends of meetings if we finish this round of review.
Thank you.
Yep. So for members of the board and members of the public, what I'm going to do in a moment is put the planning board in recess because we will be reconvening with the land use committee for a joint hearing at six thirty on two agenda items. The 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 functional way that this works is the planning board all X is out of this particular meeting and logs into a separate meeting. City staff will keep this meeting link live with a little placard saying we're in recess. If you want to join us for the joint hearing, the link is on the city's agenda under the land use committees. You know, agendas, meeting events and things like that. When that has concluded, we, the members of planning board, will X out of that meeting. The land use committee may or may not have other business that's you know, pertaining to them and not us. We will then log back into this meeting and take up the last item on our agenda, the last actual actual item with with actual business. So that's that's how it's going to work. And then how it has for folks that, you know, this is the first time Lynn is experiencing this as as a member. And for anybody else who are members of the public who wondered where the heck we went. So with that in mind, at six twenty six P M, I'm going to place the planning board in recess. And we will reconvene at the conclusion of the joint hearing with the land use committee. And depending on the time that that is, we will either take up the Cummings Street application or we will continue it. So see you all in a short period of time, I hope. Planning boards recess. Planning boards recess.
Steve, do we have you?
Yes, you do.
Okay. The words of Marshall Matters, guess who's back, back again. Planning Board is back in regular session. And we have one more item on our agenda. Which is the Cummings Street application, which has previously been opened by, by the reading of the notice of public hearing by Jahan earlier tonight. So I would welcome the applicant, their representative and their team to be unmuted, to have whoever's screen needs to be shared. And what will presentation?
All right, this is Steve Carey in the Planning Division. I have a list of folks from Andrew Minsky, the Case Planner, to promote to panelist. I'm going to promote those people and then if there's anyone else that would like to be promoted as part of this applicant team, please use the raise hand icon.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Board. I think our team is joining currently, they were waiting for the, for the joint meeting to end, so there was a little confusion there.
I will, I will say for the, for the record Attorney Glucia, that, that joint hearing ended at six fifty-six, so I lost a little bit with, with our staff liaison, so.
Were you, were you, did you have the over or the under?
That was the over.
Okay. That was the danger, Mr. Chair, I, I.
You know.
No, I, I was.
This is what I get.
I was, listen, I was at my desk and ready. I know when, when, when you want the matter to come up early, it doesn't, and when you don't, it does.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and, and, and when you're looking at Marquette with, yeah.
I ordered the, I ordered this figuring it was at ten o'clock and you folks were going to be pretty burnt out and we better be on top of our game.
Yeah, but you know I don't take after any new, uh, new items after nine o'clock anymore.
Okay, all right.
Very, for that very reason.
I can respect that.
I'd like a warm down.
I, I was elected mayor at twelve thirty in the morning, so. It's not the way to do business, but I, I, at least I had worn them down by that point.
How many other, how many other folks are waiting for on, on your team?
We have. Well, we have Ryan, uh, so Ryan, well, I think there's a couple of people waiting to be upgraded. Maybe the administrator can just check that.
Sure, Steve Carey in the Planning Division. I believe I've promoted just about everyone who had raised their hand to be part of the applicant team to panelists, so. They should all have at least the ability to come on camera if they, if they so choose. If you have someone who would like to share screen, let me know and I will give them that ability.
Okay. Christina.
Um, Erica would like to share the screen.
Okay, good.
With her permission.
Sure, I will do. Give me one moment. All right. So I believe Erica should now have the ability to share her screen.
Yeah, yep.
Like, we're ready to go.
Great, okay.
Well, we'll kick it off. Good evening, everyone. Good to be here tonight. We're excited to, to be here to discuss a new mixed use development proposed at twenty to twenty-three Cummings Street in the Assembly Square neighborhood of Somerville. My name is Ryan Souls. Good to see some, some faces, familiar faces from our project seventy-four Middlesex several, several years back. And, and back with, with this site. I'm the Senior Director of Development with Gray Star and joining me tonight are members of our Design and Permitting Team who have been working hard over the past year here to submit this, or past few years to submit this master plan special permit application. So we're going to introduce the team as we kind of work through the slides with, with respective members, but you can see, see the full team just displayed here, complex project. With everybody contributing a significant portion of it. So I'll, I'll start handing it off to Anthony to introduce the project and then we'll jump in.
Thank you, Ryan. If we could, I think Laura Solano is just waiting to be promoted, our landscape architect. Again, good evening, sorry for the awkwardness and thanks to the Chair and Planning Board for, for hearing our case tonight. My name's Anthony Galuccio. I'm a partner and permitting attorney with Galuccio and Watson. I just want to quickly summarize the purpose of which we're here. Obviously a master plan special permit. We're also seeking special permits for dimensional relief, maximum building heights on all three buildings. Buildings one and two go up to two hundred and ninety feet, building three goes to two hundred. The FAR allowed in the district is ten. We're requesting eleven point one for building one, thirteen point two for building two, fifteen point six for building three. As you know, there's a special permit requirement for commercial space over ten thousand square feet. All three buildings require that special permit. We're also seeking a special permit for access point to subsurface garage. And also a special circumstances setback. Special permit for twenty Cummings, which you'll hear a little bit about from our landscape architect, allowed is five feet. We're requesting up to twenty-five feet. So it just summarizes the approvals. Our architect will, will give much more detail as to the form build. This just outlines the path to getting here. We started back in February of twenty-two. Where, where, where we enabled the, the development, we went into meet with Mystics and, and Neighborhood in June, got great, great response. We went in and met with the city early because we were intending on seeking relief to increase floor plates for labs and having two bigger lab buildings. Sarah Lewis, Lewis was great and honest as always and asked us to come back with a, with a compliant plan. Also was suggested we consider hotel use and along the way we were also encouraged to include childcare. Both of those things were included, so we came back with a three building proposal that complied, which included the hotel, which is before you tonight. I would say PCF and mobility and planning had the most impact on this and you'll hear all the different variations of responses tonight. I would, I would say aside from the uses, really digging in and bringing life to the civic spaces, reducing vehicular traffic along what will be Cummings because our development unlocks the ability to have a through Cummings Street and we've been responding right up, right up until the meeting, eliminating drop-off spaces, et cetera, making more complete bike impaired paths through the, through the project. Just, I'm excited to be here because as someone who worked on funding in the legislature for the early days of assembly, this parcel in my mind becomes sort of a gateway parcel, but it's also just incredibly important to have the connectivity through assembly. So it's awesome. I think many of us remember the Appledans and certainly the ninety-nine and, and other, other uses that were there, but this, we, we see this as just such an enormous improvement and I'm, I'm, I'm really excited to be part of it. So we look forward to the engaging the Planning Board tonight. I'll turn it back over to Ryan for just some more wayfinding and insight overview.
Yeah, thank you, Anthony. There's an over-under on our Appledan references too, so. I'd like, I, I think most of the members of the Planning Board are familiar with the site, but I'd like to orient everyone to the existing conditions. The site is located along the Felsway West off-ramp to I ninety-three along the northwestern edge of Assembly Square. The site currently is occupied by the La Quinta Inn and Suites Hotel at twenty-three Cummings and Anthony mentioned the former ninety-nine restaurant that's now vacant at twenty Cummings Street. And just north of the, the seventy-four M development, which, which our, our Gray Star team just, you know, completed, largely completed the base building, including the civic space on and then you can see here we're also labeling another planned development, one twenty Middlesex, find another developer, that's just for context. So the site's circulated here. On the next page are some more pictures of the existing connection, existing conditions and connection points. I'd like to highlight two specifically. First, in, in image number one, the existing crosswalk across the, the Felsway West off-ramp. That, that is one of the, one of the pedestrian connections into the Assembly Square neighborhood. Right now, the, the, the crosswalk terminates in a fence that is partially used it, but um, you know, that, that's one of the ways residents or community members can get into Assembly and out of Assembly. And, and the second is, secondary, I want to flag is Cummings Street. Cummings Street is, there's some existing images here, is, is a public road. It dead ends into the site and is really an entryway to a shared parking lot that serves the La Quinta Hotel and the ninety-nine restaurant. These are kind of two circulation issues slash themes that we're going to hit as we, we move through the presentation tonight. So just wanted to flag kind of, you, you know, the existing conditions and two areas that we've really focused on, on trying to improve because they are key gateways and key components of this development and of the broader Assembly Square neighborhood and, and its connection to other neighborhoods. You know, I, I do want to flag just, just at a high level, the Gray Star did work over a period of, of a year plus to assemble these two parcels to allow for a comprehensive, comprehensive development strategy because of the kind of landlocked nature of the existing conditions. So we're happy to be here to night, tonight to present, you know, a comprehensive planning that's taken place to, to activate in this area and make it part of the Assembly Square neighborhood. You know, on the next slide, I think I, I kind of mentioned, you know, mentioned access and pedestrian access points, the, the dead-end road. Circulation is really a key theme that defined this, this site plan as we thought about putting it together. So, so here you see an image of the neighborhood context of Assembly Square. We're, we're leveraging the existing assembly conditions within the Assembly Row area and, and surrounding developments, the Assembly Square Neighborhood Plan and the proposed future development in the neighborhood to, to really kind of create a a, a new street grid and a, a new portion of Assembly that, that blends and starts to transition Assembly into the surrounding Ten Hills neighborhood, East Somerville, Foss Park area. So first shown on this map is a green line that's a new pedestrian and bicycle connection point serving as a new entry point into Assembly. And, and, and you see another dotted line here, which is the, the other, really the two principal pedestrian and bicycle entry points into Assembly under I ninety-three. As part of the seventy-four Middlesex development, we had a improvements in a civic space that create a gateway and we're looking to do the same thing here, connecting to the other existing underpass into Assembly. I think we can, we can zoom in here now on the, on the next slide, which is the detailed site plan. You know, one, one of the challenges we had on the site was the, the kind of irregular nature of it and we worked worked through iterations with the planning staff to look at numerous confederations to, to maximize the economic potential of the site and how it fits within within, within the summer vision plans, but also a circulation and public realm strategy that prioritizes the goals of summer vision and, and the assemblies for a neighborhood plan. So what we've proposed here is three, three principal buildings totaling 1, 1.4 million square feet. Building one and building two are 18-story commercial lab office buildings in the, in the lab typology within the Somerville zoning ordinance. And building three is a hospitality building of approximately 200 keys. As part of the project as well, we are proposing three thoroughfares be introduced here. Thoroughfare one is primarily a drop off for building one and we'll get into the details more, but it's really, really meant to be minimize vehicular traffic and be a pedestrian and bicycle entrance that connects to the, the crosswalk across Felsway and under I-93. Thoroughfare two is proposed as an extension of Cummings Street. So you know, currently it's private property, but extending Cummings Street for the public use. It will also serve as drop off for the hospitality building entry to the, the building one under the hotel, the, the below grade garage, but really just extending that street network. And then thoroughfare three is a, an alley connection to allow for service vehicles and, and other connection points into, into the service, service components of this project, but really driving that use away from Middlesex Avenue and behind the buildings. And then we also have two civic spaces proposed totaling just under 30,000 square feet civic space one and two that will be, be part of this overall development project to, to meet the 25% civic space requirement in the Assembly Square mixed use district. So yeah, just to summarize before we jump into the details of the plan. You know, our, our primary goals with this master plan are to, to realize the, the planning that's taken forth as part of the Assembly Square neighborhood plan to, to envision Middlesex as a primarily, primarily commercial and economic corridor largely focused on R and D uses. But also to balance those with, you know, how it fits into the larger context of the neighborhood. And that's creating porosity through the development site to, to, to bridge, bridge connection gaps that currently exist. And really what's a, what's a barrier? We feel between Assembly and the rest of Somerville and try to start breaking that down as much as we can, even though there's a, a large highway in the way. It's also to create accessible open spaces along Middlesex Avenue that, you know, encourage the public who aren't necessarily affiliated with this building to come in and interact with the, with the civic spaces in the area. We, we tend to accomplish this through the civic space programming, through thoroughfare programming, but also a ground floor retail program, a daycare proposed and a, and a really Anthony hit on it, but the hotel use was primarily intended to, to create more 24/7 activation than, than a more pure commercial use would use and bring a, a different use into the area. You know, site circulation as well is an important part of it. We looked at, we looked at the, the larger plan for the current and future Assembly and just creating that, you know, street grid. So it's not a, a dead end into a parking lot and, and create a circulation pass. So this can, you know, all function as a successful urban neighborhood, which is really, you know, why we're here in Assembly. Assembly Row is such a successful, successful urban planning effort and, 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 you know, urban neighborhood. And we want to extend that to, to this site on the other end of Assembly. And then the economic benefits of this, this project, the real estate taxes, linkage fees paid to the city Somerville. We know summer vision and Somerville's priorities on economic, economic development and, and ways that can drive revenue to, to Somerville. And this is one of the principal areas in, in Somerville zoning and the Assembly Square neighborhood plan that have identified to, to achieve those economic goals. So I'm going to pass it off to our design team to, and to start to, to walk through the, the master plan in additional detail. Michael, I think you're on.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. So the, the next couple of images, I think, put some 3D imagery to a lot of the project goals that Ryan just outlined, which I, I think are really the, the heart and soul of the project. Just quickly, just to reemphasize that the massing, as you can see, this is from the Somerville's proposed guidelines or, or urban design concepts are located along the Felsway ramp and the I-93, the higher massing as a spine. And then the concept of the diagram to the right, that the reduced height tapers down towards the, the new and existing Assembly Row neighborhood. Next, please. So here we have two images of how we've developed the massing to respond to the site and also to this idea of where the big massing might go. So the, the image on the right hand side shows a view looking, an aerial view looking from the west, looking towards the east. And you can see that they follow the curve of the Felsway ramp along I-93. And the composition of the buildings are, are such that we wanted to make sure that you had views into it and views out of it. And that the way the buildings are configured, each one would have its own unique identity, which we think would add to the vitality and the interest of the project, particularly as is seen in the larger context from 93 and from Cambridge, as long as, as well as the inside. And the other image, interestingly, only 20 Cummings is really visible from Middlesex. Where assuming, you know, 120 Middlesex project is actually in front of 23 Cummings would actually block that view and only 23 would really be known by its image along the highway. Next, please. So this, this, this plan slide, it references the one that Ryan was kind of given an overview of. And I think this is really the heart and the, the concept of our project in that it's really about neighborhood connectivity. And I think everybody knows that it's not the most wonderful way to get across from Foss Park through our site, you know, under the, over the, over the road and under the expressway. But nonetheless, a lot of people do that. And so we initially keyed on that that really is a portal. That was something that was very important that we needed to understand on how to make the site work around it. Because this is really a pedestrian oriented project. It's an urban design project. It's not an architectural project in that way. So we really want to make sure that the connectivity through the site. And then as one would wind its way towards Assembly Row was evident and a very public facing experience. So that intention was to provide an existing dynamic connection from Foss Park through the development to, to the Assembly Row, which I think is the key diagram for this project. And along that way is an experience of diverse and active activities along this way. And, you know, there was a, a great effort, both architecturally, and you'll see a little later about landscape, to have the public come in contact both with the civic spaces and with the base of the buildings where there was either passive or active experiences. So there really was a lot of action and activity, but also some passive spaces as well. The, the other move that we made is you can see that 20 Cummings sort of bends down, becomes perpendicular to Middlesex. And very deliberately made a, a very big opening because we wanted to make sure that the public, the people, whether you're, you're on foot, bicycle or car, you could see into the project. We didn't want this to feel landlocked and some sort of secret space. So there's a big view corridor that was created and one of our civic spaces actually occupies that. And a little later, Laura from Michael Van Valkenburg is going to walk you through all that, that detail. Next slide, please. And then developing that even further and really reemphasizing, because I don't know, know that we could say it enough, is that you'll see these big dark green arrows there. That's really the focus of the public moving through the project. So it really, the project worked around that circulation of the pedestrian is the priority and the cars are really secondary on how they move. And the blue hours, obviously the cars. So the, the, the automobile really is a secondary, you know, activity. We did need to have it come onto the site for ADA drop off, live drop offs at lobbies and, and Uber, that kind of thing. But otherwise, the buildings are serviced around the perimeter and very much minimized or no contact with pedestrian circulation. So that was really a, a very deliberate move on our part. So I'm going to pause here and Pat from VHB is going to walk through the, the mobility and traffic.
Thank you, Michael. And good evening, everyone. Patrick Dunford, Transportation Engineer with VHB. I'd like to just give you a brief overview of the ongoing transportation engineering work we've been doing for this project, which is summarized in the Transportation Impact Study that we had submitted as part of our application. We've already gone over the general site location and characteristics, but we are just under a half mile walk from the Assembly Square Orange Line Station. So, you know, with that, we are a true transit oriented development. There are multiple bus routes, both existing and future planned that'll be within Assembly Square. So there's certainly, we're anticipating a sizable transit component of how people get to and from the site. That being said, there's still going to be roughly half the people coming in are going to be using automobile. And with that, we did the detailed comprehensive traffic study. We took a look at over 20 locations, which I'll discuss momentarily. And in addition to the vehicular stuff, we also focused obviously on pedestrians, as discussed earlier, with the I-93 connection at the back end of the site. And making sure that the site is bikeable, walkable, and that it ties in with Middlesex Avenue and the surrounding area. We are familiar with the city's plans for Middlesex Avenue, the vision of what that'll look like in the future. And we're well familiar with summer vision 2040. So everything we're doing, we're trying to keep an eye on that and be consistent with it. In terms of minimizing traffic impacts, one of the most effective ways that can be done is in managing the parking supply. We're proposing between serving the three buildings, two underground parking facilities with a total of 935 spaces on day one. Approximately 197 of those spaces are going to be valet or tandem operation. The reason being that we hope to phase those out over time. Most likely at the end of five years where those would be eliminated depending on observations and accumulation at that time. So at first, we're going to be starting with a parking ratio in terms of spaces per thousand square feet of about 0.65. And over time, once those interim spaces are eliminated, will be down to 0.51. This is much lower than you'll find in other developments within Assembly Square. And it's also lower than other developments in the surrounding area. Cambridge, recent lab developments over there have been targeting somewhere between 0.80 and 0.920 spaces per thousand square feet. And again, we expect we're going to be ending up at 0.51. So we are truly trying to promote as many people as possible getting to and from the site besides private automobile. And I should mention as well, the garages per city mobility direction will be commercial facilities. So it's not going to be an isolated parking facility just for this project. Significant portion will be public. Moving forward on the traffic study that we conducted, we could jump forward one slide. And again, everyone's well familiar with it, but just to re-acclimate in the center in orange will have highlighted the project site. And around it, we took a look at approximately 21 intersections, key locations that are the gateways to and from Assembly Square's neighborhood and along the surrounding roadways, 28 Mystic Avenue, et cetera. So it was a highly comprehensive study. Not surprisingly, there's a lot of issues out here today, just with the sheer volume and the surrounding roadways. One particular area that's, well, actually we'll get to that momentarily, along the frontage and Middlesex Avenue. The city pointed out through their mobility division, certain areas that we should look at a little bit more closely, which we've done. Prior to that though, one more point, if we could jump one slide ahead. We're trying to both address the traffic that's on the street. And we're also trying to minimize the actual amount of traffic that's going to be out there. This is done through a transportation management plan. And the contents of this have already been approved in the form of a mobility management plan for the city of Somerville. We don't necessarily have to go through every line here, but a single person, the TDM Coordinator will be assigned for this development to manage the traffic operations, try to find ride share, coordinate with other businesses in the area. The tenants coming in are going to be offering 90% transit subsidy, which should have a significant impact on helping promote people to use the T to get to and from the site as opposed to driving. The proponent already for another project is a member of the Assembly Connect TMA, which manages traffic operations within Assembly Square. This project will also formally become a member of that. Some of the type of activities, this project is going to be providing blue bikes, new stations at three different locations to be coordinated with the city and also subsidized memberships. There's other items as well, but this is just kind of showing the spirit of not just dealing with the traffic when it's on the street, but trying to avoid it in the first place. Now, if we could jump forward through some recent discussions with the mobility division, they did raise some concerns about Middlesex Avenue immediately next to the site. Currently, we're proposing both McGrath Highway and Cummings Street. Both would have single lanes entering and exiting under stop sign control. And the analysis we presented to them showed some pretty lengthy delays. We believe those may be overstated for a variety of reasons, but regardless, we took a closer look. And in particular, McGrath Highway, which I've circled at the bottom, we could jump forward one. So to address some of the concerns they had, which were minimizing delays for people getting in and out of the site, which in turn could affect both bicyclists, pedestrians and the Middlesex Avenue traffic. We're proposing a traffic signal at McGrath Highway's intersection with Middlesex Avenue that would be paid for, installed by this project. And it would be incorporated into the adaptive signal system that's being implemented within Assembly Square as a whole. By providing this, this also has benefits to pedestrians where there would be an exclusive pedestrian phase as well as an exclusive bike phase. So we're making sure we're processing the vehicular traffic, but we're also making sure we can safely get the pedestrians and the bicyclist across and through the intersection as needed. We're still working out the details of this and we hope to be discussing it further with the mobility division. I have seen some correspondence with them where they also mentioned the possibility of a signal. And they even mentioned the possibility of up to two signals with the second being at the top side of the screen at Cummings. I think we can manage it with just one, but we're more than happy to do both if necessary. And in doing this, we can maintain both full access and egress, both at McGrath under signal control and Cummings further to the north. So in doing so, we've appropriately mitigated the impacts of the project and made sure it's safe and efficient for both cars, pedestrians and bicyclists. So I'll be here for the evening. Happy to take questions. For now, I think we're going to transition to our landscape architect and thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Laura Solano and I'm a partner in landscape architect with Michael Van Valkenburg Associates. And we really appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to share our work with the city staff to make important changes that will both fulfill the neighborhood plan and also set a standard for future development. I think we're aligned with the city's ambition to make open spaces that contribute to the quality of life for all Somerville residents. And, you know, truly, we want the landscape here to get hardwired into the daily life of the neighborhood. We want people to come here. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Go back. So there's been a lot of discussion by others about how the master plan has worked to create generous green spaces. But I think the, the difference here, the difference in this discussion is that civic space one, which is next to building one, is meant to be an immersive landscape, which means it's going to provide a high dose of nature, which is so important to the health of city dwellers. And civic space two, which we've dubbed a gateway, is a space that's open to Middlesex and the Assembly Neighborhood in general. We're also going to discuss the three thoroughfares or the thoroughfares. I'm going to talk about thoroughfares one and two. And in that, we will get to some of the work that the city has done with us to maximize the experience for those who are on foot and on bike. Next. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the civic spaces first. So in civic space one, as I said, it's an immersive landscape. There's going to be plenty of places to sit and enjoy the city, to meet up with others. and enjoy the city, to meet up with others or just people watch. Um, the space is big enough for special events or scheduled activities like, say, exercise classes. Um, inclusion of the daycare in Building One, which is right here, has really been a big bonus for us because it, you know, suddenly makes sense to include a playground as a major destination in this space, which will bring lots of activity um and, you know, life to the project. I mean, the sound of kids playing is, in my mind, a great one. And, you know, we know that wherever kids go, adults follow. In Civic Space Two, this is a a different kind of space, which is made possible by the variance of increasing the setback of Building Two from five feet to twenty-five feet. Without that, I think we'd have a much different condition here. At nine thousand square feet and open on two sides, we think the benefit, certainly to Middlesex Avenue, is that in this long stretch of urban landscape, it's gonna provide some green frontage as well as views into this site so that you start to get the sense of depth within the city, which I think is is really important to wayfinding and, you know, just general enjoyment. It's also a different kind of activity in the sense that it's adjacent to retail and it will have lawn for passive enjoyment. And then as as long as we're here, I'd like to mention that the hospitality building, we've also increased the setback for that by five feet to help with that connection that you heard Michael talk about, so that the views between Buildings One and Two and the hospitality building kind of join together in that space, kind of making room for each other. Next. So here's a perspective of Civic Space One. You're looking from Civic Space Two and the city really encouraged us to make this a welcoming, open, green and generous space so that people would feel really drawn in there. Next. And then this is a view of Civic Space Two from Middlesex Avenue. Um, and it has all the charac- characteristics of passive recreation. You can see there's an opportunity to have tables out there and also views beyond. Next. So wanted to touch on the thoroughfares um a little bit differently. Um, certainly there is that both pedestrian ve- and vehicular condition, but I I think in order to make that effective, you really need to think about what the experience is on foot and on bike. And we've worked quite a bit with the city um to think about how this might be handled effectively, especially since, you know, you have to cross Fells Way West in order to get into this spa- this space and which is a pretty, you know, tall order to make it a inviting and and generous. Um, we know it's, this is a critical gateway into Assembly Square Neighborhood from Winter Hill, East Somerville and beyond. And so the way that this works just diagrammatically, we're gonna look at some other slides that will explain it, but diagrammatically, this is the space, the twelve-foot wide multimodal space that will allow pedestrians and um uh bikers to have their own space. Thoroughfare One, as was previously previously mentioned, is a pretty slim street. It's it's twelve feet wide, but it's flanked by six-foot wide sidewalks so that it could make and allow room for emergency vehicles. Another important aspect to this thoroughfare is that we've, we have kind of a modest drop off. That's important certainly for accessing the building and Uber, but what it's really, really critical for is to get to that daycare, to allow uh people to uh to drop off in that location um so that uh kids don't have to cross any streets. Next. So here's a um a cross section through that, and I'll start at Building One on the side. So we have a plant bed against the building. There's that twelve-foot multimodal path. We have another plant bed um adjacent to the street. There's that six-foot sidewalk I talked about, the twelve-foot drive aisle. And then against the hospitality building, we have a stormwater plant bed that's gonna help with runoff from the street. But you can see by combining the eighteen-foot, I'm sorry, the twelve-foot drive with the six-foot sidewalk, you get eighteen feet of um emergency access. Next. And then this is a perspective um taken from the viewpoint of Fells Way West. Um, you can see we're really, you know, working hard to make a uh green landscape connection to the project so that when you're crossing um Fells Way and you're, you know, in the sidewalks, you can see the threshold ahead. Next. And then Thoroughfare Two, which um is an extension of Cummings Street, of course, and is in front of Building Three. You know, besides having that connection through um for Cummings, um it's also a two-way road, um as Pat mentioned. And it leads to the hospitality building entrance with this with a drop off. It also provides access to the underground garage. Um, and then it will be flanked with uh city standard landscaping. Next. And this is a cross section through the area, uh the two-way area. So we we have the luxury of having variable walks from between six feet to fourteen feet so that it, you know, it ju- it definitely will um privilege the the pedestrian. Next. And then this is a section through the drop off, so you can see that that does snug up the sidewalk a little bit, but it's a relatively short distance for that, but it also provides a safe pull aside for those entering um the hospitality. So that ends the landscape portion of it. Again, I'm like Patrick, I'm more than happy to talk about details um that we couldn't present um here. Um, and with that, I'll hand over the presentation to Anne Earhart to talk about retail and bring us all home.
Thank you, Laura, and good evening, everybody. I'm Anne Earhart, founder and CEO of Everstreet. We're the retail consultants for this project and are really excited to wrap up tonight's presentation with a look at how the retail will help execute project goals of improving connectivity and creating an active public realm. The current proposed retail master plan calls for approximately sixteen thousand square feet of retail space spread across the three buildings, including space specifically set aside for daycare use. Combined with the building at seventy-four M next door, there will be about twenty-one thousand square feet of new retail space delivered to the Assembly Square Neighborhood. Upon completion, this project will transform what I think we've all agreed is an inactive and underutilized pass-through into a vibrant retail environment that serves in a natural extension of Assembly Square. A key component of the project's connectivity is the activation of the Middlesex Avenue retail corridor. You can see that here on the master plan, we have a prominent retail space at the corner of Middlesex Avenue and Cummings Street. And this is a critical part of the enhanced gateway and the pru- improved porosity that Ryan mentioned. The project will deliver on the requested daycare use, and we're working on designing the daycare space to ensure its success so that we don't just get a daycare to sign a lease and open. We get a daycare that has long-term success and is a dependable amenity for families in the area. The existing La Quinta Motel on the site today that's surrounded by parking spaces and no active ground floor presence will be replaced by a modern hospitality offering that has lively ground floor retail on the building bullnose. You can see that right on the plan in the heart of the site. So not only does the site improve connection with its surroundings, it also gives visitors a sense of arrival and destination, really a reason to stay, and I think most importantly, a reason to come back. Next slide, please. So as we continue in our planning process, here's what you can expect to be hearing from us. We are fine tuning the plan to ensure that the retail spaces complement the civic spaces and thoroughfares for a cohesive user experience. For example, Laura just mentioned that we've already co-located the daycare with the immersive playground space in Civic Space One. And we'll be playing similar matchmaker with the vibe of the other civic spaces and the retail spaces as we continue in our process. You can see from this picture on the slide, the development team has been out talking to the community about the retail component. I can tell you there is a lot of excitement about what has already happened at Assembly Square and a lot of excitement also about what this project will bring to the neighborhood. And finally, we're taking all of that feedback that we're collecting to craft a merchandising plan tailored to what we've heard people in the area need and want. So when the project is completed and the retailers are open, the public realm will be busy and well utilized by people in the area. And with that, I'm gonna send it back to Anthony to conclude our presentation this evening.
Thank you, Anne. Uh, Mr. Chair and Board, just quickly, um wanna just address the memos. And first, I wanna uh thank Andrew Gramansky for all his work um moving this along and also Justin from Mobility and Luis at P S F. Uh, as you've, as you've heard, uh, those folks had a lot of impact here, and I mentioned Sarah. Um, as you have seen, um, the the planning uh memo, I think aligns with with all of what we said tonight in terms of um our project aligning with Summer Vision and the goals of both planning and economic goals of the city. We we have no um major issues at all with um the legal memo. Uh, we we we'll work with staff around the thoroughfares and providing appropriate um easements uh for the city. Um, Mobility has provided an extensive um memo and it 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 sort of aligns with the complexity of traffic study these days, I think, in its in its length. Uh, the good news is that we're um we're amenable to almost all the all the conditions that are suggested um with a couple with a couple with couple uh variations. Um, so we look forward to continuing those those discussions, but in general, um we we feel good about uh all the memorandum, and that concludes the the presentation.
Thank you, uh Attorney Kujic. So this is a, this is a well thought out and and well presented uh application, and and I appreciate that. What I think I wanna do is I know I have some comments and questions. Um, I'm sure my my colleagues do too. I always, not always, I yeah, I generally prefer to see where the public's at first. Um, before we talk amongst ourselves because we have to be here. They they don't. Um, so what I'd like to do now, unless anybody has anything super pressing they'd like to raise to the applicant team or staff before I open it up to public testimony, um let me know. Okay. Seeing none. What I'd like to do is open up the hearing for public testimony. Uh, so folks know uh this is the the beginning of this discussion with with the applicant. We're not gonna take any action tonight. Um you know, we'll we'll see where we are in a few weeks and uh this is kind of an ongoing discussion based on what we hear from you, what we hear from uh staff and the applicant and our internal discussions. So this is the beginning of the process and and not the end. Um, so with the nature of public testimony, this isn't a back and forth between um, you know, the public and the applicant and board. Yeah, this is this is to present something and we will certainly take it under advisement. You'll also have the opportunity to present written testimony. Uh, we're going to put a two-minute timer on uh on testimony, which is our usual practice. So if you can't finish it in in then, I'll let you get out, you know, a sentence or two, but I'm not gonna uh for the good of the meeting, I'm not gonna let you go on for, you know, fifteen minutes, and you can always supplement it in in writing. So what I'd like to do is open up public testimony for anybody that wants to speak in support of the application. There's a raised hand button on Zoom. Um, and I'll call on you in the order in which I see you. And again, as I reminded folks at the beginning of the meeting, uh, please give your name and street uh and and city of of residence. You don't have to give the actual address, but we do need a a street and and the city. So I see the first person is Eilish Brown. So if Eilish could please be unmuted, and thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Eilish Brown and I live in Somerville on um Bow Street. I I did have a comment for um for this very thoughtful um initial presentation and I it wasn't clear to me whether you're aiming for an academic or um industry tenant. And it also wasn't clear to me whether it was meant to be biomedical or uh medicinal chemistry, but I wanted to point out to you that if it's biomedical or basic biology, you tend to skew very heavily, especially people actually working in the lab, female. And you also tend to skew very heavily young. So in industry, that's twenty to forty. In academia, that's more like twenty to thirty, thirty-five. And the reason that I wanted to say this is I think that we're seeing a large number of people um who would be working in this area, living in East Somerville, who will probably be walking across that underpass into this space. And so I would urge you to consider uh lighting and safety even more than you already have because while I I do appreciate that's something you've given consideration, I think it's even more important than perhaps you realize because of the demographic of the workers who tend to actually have to be on-site doing lab work. Anyway, um, the only other question I or or comment I really had, which is somewhat of a question, is there's a lot of open lab space available right now. Are you sure we really need more labs? Um, but I, you know, I'm sure you've done your market research. Thank you.
You very much. Uh, the next person I see is uh Wendy uh Emorato.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I would echo that lab space. I'm from the pharma industry too. Um, I didn't see any pictures and discussion of the impact on the existing and very historic Ten Hills neighborhood. I saw no pictures of what it will look like from that neighborhood and the impact. There was a lot of making it very beautiful for Assembly. Um, I happen to live in fourteen Ten Hills, so I I neglected that, Michael, to say where I was. I am one of the first four houses on Ten Hills that will now live in the shadow of your mountain, and I'm not happy about that. I think the bu- that you're taller by your own admission than the other buildings in Assembly. We don't live in a city where we want skyscrapers. It has an impact on our sunlight. It has an impact on our mood and disposition. It also, I'm concerned about air quality studies you've done. That's a heavy road that sits there, and if you're there as a mountain, you're gonna block. It's not gonna go. I saw on the website that you talked about the air quality in the buildings. How about the air quality in the neighborhood across the street when all those exhaust fumes are blocked? Um, I'd like to see that addressed. And uh, the sunlight is actually um a health concern. I have a vitamin D deficiency, as does my daughter, so it is very significant. It's not just about, it makes us feel happy. Um, and uh, you bought the property knowing the the height restriction, so I'm really confused why you would um want to do this to the Ten Hills neighborhood. But I would love to see the visuals and the images and hear all the considerations that you took into account to make sure that that neighborhood is preserved and respected um as well.
Wendy, thank you very much. Does anybody else have test, excuse me, testimony that they'd like to present in support of the application? Seeing none. Well, once, going twice, seeing none. I'm gonna close that portion of the public hearing and open it up to anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the application or otherwise express concern. Um, Eilish, your hand is still raised. I'm not going to, there we go. Anybody else? Once. Twice. Three times, seeing none. Uh, I will close that portion of the public hearing and open it up to comments and questions uh by members of the planning board. I I have um a number of comments and and some questions too, but I would like to see where my colleagues are first, if anybody would like to to go. You're all shy tonight. Okay, 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 I see.
Um, I took I took notes. So Chair, should I go through all the questions or should I do them individually?
Oh, you mean, do you wanna ask all of your questions first and and have a, what makes most sense for for what you wanna talk about? Do you have?
I I think it's better to do them, I think it's better to do it individually.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So on slide, on slide twelve, first off, I I thought this was a really thorough and interesting project. There was a lot to like about it, particularly the current uses and what you're doing to revitalize the area and the connectivity to Assembly. So a lot to really like about it. So my questions really get into the nitty gritty on how to make it better. So I want, I kinda wanted to start there. On slide twelve, whoever was presenting slide twelve, there was a lot of conversation around, this is, this project is all about connecting to the other neighborhoods. This project is all about connecting to the other neighborhoods. Look at Foss over here, look at Foss over here. But as another commenter discussed, there was nothing about the connectivity to Ten Hills, which is right across the street. Now, I understand it's crossing, I think sixteen, might be twenty-eight, it's a miserable arterial, but it it's still, see, there's even this picture. There's there's nothing to the, from my, to the top, I guess that's to the north of of the Ten Hills. So I I think understanding how you're connecting to that neighborhood, both from a pedestrian as as well as a a biker's perspective, like how how are you getting that that connectivity? I I think is is gonna be an an important piece here, because there's a lot of residences over there. You guys are now providing this really important piece for greater connectivity into all of Assembly Square. So I I think that's, I think that's really important. And likewise, you've got a lot of conversation about connecting underneath ninety-three to, is it the Foss Park, right, right, uh, right on the other side of ninety-three? You talked more about that on slide fourteen. What concerned me is you said, you know, it's not great, but people walk under that, and people do that. I would like to challenge you. I I know at different times, Chair, you've gone back and and asked the presenters to come back with some additional information. And and this, if you felt this was appropriate. You know, five or ten years ago, activating the space under a interstate was was not imagined at all. It was just considered a dead space. Since that time, particularly in in Miami, I know several case studies there, and that's just an example. They've done an amazing job of creating these beautiful spaces, believe it or not, underneath interstates. And I I love all of the landscape architect of civic space, one, two, et cetera. I would love to see more information, best practices, how you can really make shine the pedestrian connectivity underneath ninety-three to Foss. If this is really about, as I heard you say a number of different times, about the connectivity to the other neighborhoods, let's begin to see that. What what does it look like underneath underneath ninety-three? And lot of great examples all over the country that you can that you can pull on on that. And then finally, on slide eighteen, I was trying to to count on the on the, I think it was Middlesex. Is that really eight lanes? Look at those arrows, I'm counting the arrows. Is that eight lanes? And if it is eight lanes, how, I'm trying to think if, at different times, I've I've blown out a knee. And so I'm on crutches, and I'm trying to cross eight lanes, or I'm in a wheelchair and I'm trying to get across. Or I'm with my eighty-seven-year-old mother try trying to get across, like, that's a really long distance to realistically cross if you're not, you know, young and vibrant. So I I wanted to raise that question as well. As I said, this, these sound very critical. Overall, it was a great project. I think that you have the opportunity to really dive into the nitty gritty and and make this project soar. So tho- those were my my three kind of comments and questions.
Mr. Chair, would you, would, how would you like us? I I think I'm making a, I'm making a li- a running list, because I think we're gonna end up in a place where we're gonna submit responses for the next meeting.
That's that, that's what I anticipate too, Anthony, is 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 Lynn raised some some very good questions and good points. I think some of that, and 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 I will also be asking you for maybe some additional information.
Yep.
It wouldn't surprise me if if some of my colleagues are gonna ask the same thing. So if you if you if you have immediate responses to some questions, great. If if you need some some couple of weeks to, you know, formulate a a proper response and 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 a thoughtful presentation of of an answer to questions, we we always welcome that. Like, like I said at the beginning, this is the beginning of the of the conversation and and not the end.
Yeah, and folks, particularly for the public that wa- you know, weighed in, what I would say is we 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 will respond extensively on airpa- impacts in terms of shadow. We feel, we feel pretty good about that, and we will come back and show you more information and some of which we already submitted, but we're, we feel good about that in terms of height. Lynn, awesome energy, nothing I haven't heard before, having represented the area. You sound a little like Matt McLaughlin. The the, I will say, it was interesting when we when we went out and did input session at the Mystic Housing Development, folks over there cross right there and then come down. Let's, let's think about, you know, let's think about the underpass and I'm, uh, uh, sort of how linkage has been handled is interesting, because at times there was open-ended buckets for sort of transportation improvements in the area. And I, like, I wanna do a little research on how the city's thinking about working with the state on that. In terms of Ten Hill connection, let's, we'll take a look at that. Some of that is a little bit above our pay grade, because it's a broader Assembly sort of challenge. But you're right, we did make a lot to do with connectivity. I think our focus was on getting through and across our site, but you have inspired us to take another look at those things. So, and Mr. Chair, I'll I'll keep, I'll keep a running list and make sure that I work with Andrew and staff to make sure that we we've got everything so we can respond comprehensively. Oh, I I do wanna say to the lab piece, and Ryan can weigh in, because I think it's a great question. Gray Star has made an incredible investment, obviously, in this area to deliver on research facilities, which is really what Somerville was looking for. We're still, we're still optimistic that interest rates will come down, and we think Assembly is still a very competitive place. So we we're far, we're a long way from giving up on Assembly to have it it more advanced research growth, but I can let Ryan speak to that as well.
Yeah, yeah, happy to, nothing, nothing much to add there. The the lab office market is is at a bit of a low point currently, but it's a, it's an industry that's dynamic, continues to grow, and continues to evolve. You know, not just, not just, you know, kind of lab office in the biotech, pharma sense of the world, but R and D of all types. Top tech, clean energy initiatives that are, you know, a lot of them spinning out of retail labs in Somerville. You know, it it, all all kinds of R and D that that fit within this knowledge economy, or what these buildings just with a greater infrastructure designed to accommodate. So through the duration of this, we expect the planning effort and construction effort, we expect the market to continue to evolve. And, you know, and and Gray Star is a long-term owner and with our partners and investor in this location, Assembly. I mean, this is a, you know, a much, much longer term strategy and focused than the than the immediate dislocation in the market. And I'd like, just a clarifying point maybe on this this traffic diagram that we have off, it is, Middlesex will be a single-lane road, or a single-lane road in each direction, and here we have a dedicated right and a dedicated left. So I know it shows up, there there's four signals. Like, one's a pedestrian signal, one's a bicycle signal, and then one's a left turn line, and one's a one's a, one's a straight, a go straight signal. So I just wanted to, I I think it appears like a larger intersection than it is, so maybe that helps clarify.
Who else on the on the planning board? Because I I have I have some questions too, yeah, Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if you could share a little bit more about this plan in relation to seventy-four Middlesex? So had you been working on the assemblage at the time that's, for how long had you been working on the assemblage in relation of seventy-four Middlesex as permitting and timeline? And I I believe I recall that for seventy-four Middlesex, you actually came in with an FAR that was substantially under what the zoning allowed. So I'm just trying to reconcile that with the request for the sort of permitting above the existing standards for the parcels directly adjacent. I'd like to understand better your thinking about the differences between those and sort of why that's called for here.
Yeah, happy, happy to address that, thank you. The Gray Star was was under construction on seventy-four Middlesex, and and these opportunities came up directly, Jason. So it's kind of been an evolution. One site became available, and and as the second site became available, we recognized the the need for a more cohesive planning effort because of the challenges of circulation and access to the sites and and the current La Quinta Hotel that's, that's, you know, effectively buried, you know, behind the site and in a parking lot. So it has been, I'd say, years in the making and years in the planning effort. I think our first meeting with planning staff, we did not have the entire site assembled and started to, or pre-meeting, and we started to recognize the need to have a cohesive plan. You know, we have worked with the developers on one-twenty Middlesex as well to attempt to coordinate. I know there's been some developments that are fully reflected in this plan that will create an even more cohesive kind of ecosystem here. For us, it is very strategic, I mean, to to attract tenants to this, to this area, and in Somerville, from other locations, they need to see a path to growth. Seventy-four Middlesex is our first investment in the area. We have had tenants come through and and, you know, they're ready to take the commitment now at seventy-four Middlesex, but they need to see a growth path in the future as their companies grow and and their their science and research expands and and that new comes. And there are all larger tenants that are are looking for, you know, space that's bigger than seventy-four Middlesex in the market. So it is, it is much more of a kind of strategic strategy. It was not as initially planned, and seventy-four Middlesex was entitled and envisioned, and even under construction. These sites came came available after that, after that dynamic. Actually, I think the ninety-nine restaurant, you know, had had a, had a lease on the site and elected to close and and have, you know, free up that site, and similar transaction happened with this since the hotel that allowed it to be available for redevelopment. So that was the first point of the question. Can you remind me of the second, second one?
I I believe that seventy-four Middlesex was permit, the plan was for less FAR than what was permitted for that site. So I'm just under, trying to understand how you're thinking about what would seem to be comparable projects that have very different needs. And also, so sorry, I'm, like, you're very quiet for me. I don't know if that's just on my side or for anyone else, but if you might be able to speak up, that would be really great.
Yeah, sure, happy to.
Thank you.
Happy to, seventy-four Middlesex, I do not have the number in front of me currently, but but I believe we did seek a a a special permit variance for additional FAR there as well. That one, the civic space is located on on an adjacent parcel. There was a park that was owned by the city, so it's a lot like, a lot like building. So I believe that the FAR is in the same ten to ten, ten, ten-four range, if I recall correctly, but in a very similar FAR bucket. Seventy-four Middlesex is is a sixteen-story building, and these are proposed savings, so slightly different, but generally the same scale and scope of development.
Thank you. And then, this is super minor, and I'm certainly not an expert, but I've had a little bit of experience in this area. My understanding is that childcare facilities usually want some kind of secure green space accessible to them. Is that something that will be in the civic space in the portion of the site to be used to the public? Or will there be privately held open space that's held back to support? You really emphasize that as a community amenity and your desire for the success of that tenant. And my personal experience is that daycare operators typically want to have controlled playground space as opposed to like necessarily a public space. So I'm wondering if that's something that you've engaged with any operators to look at at all.
Right, Ryan, I could just, I I've had various variety of experiences on that, where where we have this, as you know, different types of operators, and the industry's changed a little bit, because the publics have gotten better at being able to also take market sort of rate and and mix clients. But I I have not, I've seen instances where folks will utilize public spaces. We we understand that our civic space needs to be public. So to the extent that there's a childcare and they're using, it would have to, it would have to mix with with public use. Unless we create some indoor patio or private space that we would show, which we're not doing now, it would, it would have to integrate with 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 the public's use. So.
I I would just encourage you to continue to, you know, discuss if you think that there's a top-of-the-line operator that you would have in mind if they have specific requirements before this delineation of the civic space is is finalized. And I I would like to also commend you for including that in the first building that is intended to be built. I was expecting that there may be a a timeline issue with that, and I'm, I appreciate that there's the thought that an amenity that you're sort of leading with would be built in an earlier stage of the project.
Thank you. Well, we ha- I have it on my list, we'll, and we'll do some homework on that.
Yeah, I I will just add, our our vision for that civic space, and it it will come through the site plan processes to to have a playground that is part of that civic space adjacent to the daycare. And I think in in an urban setting, we do anticipate, you know, the daycare operators, top, top tier, will, you know, are willing to use a public playground. And we envision it as, you know, somewhat dynamic playground, which obviously we'll 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 get to further in the planning process, but I just wanted to.
Absolutely, and I'm not trying to argue with you. I just, I saw that in the landscape plan, we were talking about this as a like intensive nature zone. And I don't think of, I'd love to see a playground that is also an intensive nature zone, but I wasn't really sure if those were overlapping in the same space. Thank you.
We're definitely gonna come there, yep, thank you.
I hear a playground and intensive nature zone, I think of Tazan. Did I see John Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanna commend the the applicant for a comprehensive presentation that addresses a lot of the questions that I had prior to prior to this planning board meeting. So I think it's a, it's a terrific object that activates the the site. I do have a couple of questions, and they're gonna be a little bit disparate. So I'll start with the first question around phasing. So I understand that there there are three phases at this time, and and I believe, I believe that there was a mention of economic conditions with respect to laboratory space, and I appreciate the longer-term vision, and, you know, I I'm certainly supportive of it. One item I just wanted to ask, and this is coming from the staff memo, is that is there a possibility of combining phases instead of having three phases, possibly going to two phases? And I know there there's economic considerations there. I just wanna understand, better understand what the what the thought process was in terms of developing the phases in the manner that they have been presented.
Yeah, there there, there is a number of considerations at play here, but La Quinta Hotel is still an operating hotel. It does generate, you know, cash flow, the need of repair, and so there's a question of of development potential there. There's also kind of a site access and construction logistics equation that the needs to be evaluated. So outside of market conditions, there are several factors that that will evolve as we move through the planning process, you know. And and adjacent develops, developments, including one-twenty Middlesex that's here, may or may not advance. I think we we do have the opportunity to develop multiple phases at once. It is also market-dependent, like we talked about. Building one and the hospitality building are are somewhat connected in that they Building one and the hospitality building are somewhat connected in that they, the parking ramp to building one is located under the hospitality building, so. Our intent is to build effectively the foundation and in that ramp for the hotel and well, well advanced in building one and potentially. They are pretty close and there's some logistical considerations, but to have that kind of, I don't want to call it a. They're not separate phases, but a phase, phase one to phase one point, one point five or something, you know, there's a sequence to it, but they're just not going to be going vertical at the exact same time. Um, so there, there are, a lot of it does come down in this tight urban environment to, to construction logistics as much as market conditions.
Certainly, thank you, I appreciate that, second question, and this, this. This is probably an extension of what my fellow board member Lynn had asked about connectivity. You know, I certainly appreciate everything that Lynn had asked about when it comes to Ten Hills neighborhood, I'm also thinking of the other side, meaning the Assembly Square. District, I know that in the neighborhood, the neighborhood meeting report, there was, you know, there was a question raised around shuttle. Shuttle bus connect connectivity to the, to the Orange Line Station as well as any other types of connectivity, obviously as Assembly Square. Develops, you know, there's going to be more and more projects coming on and it will look, it will appear to be a, a more, I would say contiguous. Area, and I just wanted to get a better sense, and this may be an item for our discussion for next time. What, what the thought, the, the thought plan, the thought process and the plans might be for the Assembly Square side when it comes to the connectivity as well. So not necessarily looking for a response now, just something to note. The last item that I wanted to raise was just understanding with respect to lab space and thinking ahead, you know, with respect to. With, with respect to the, the buildings being fully occupied, you know, in terms of, in terms of. In terms of future, and this is kind of projecting far ahead and into the future. When it comes to hazardous materials or deliveries of, of materials, what is, what is the plan? And, and again, this is, I understand that there, there may be a lot of variables here, but I do want to better understand that because you have a hotel's location, you have a daycare. You have a daycare on site, all which are fantastic, and then, you know, you, you also have two, two laboratory buildings, which will have various types of deliveries. And again, this might be something to discuss next time, or if the applicant wants to discuss it now, that they're more than welcome to do so as well.
Yeah, happy to, happy to provide some initial thoughts. You, you know, we, we were very intentional about thinking about loading these buildings and the types of activities that get materials in and out of them. You know, we drove, it was very intentional to drive most of that traffic, you know, towards the back of the site on the highway side. You know, in Cambridge and many locations, it's, it's very common for, you know, the flat buildings to be located adjacent to residential uses and. Other commercial hospitality, retail uses, it's. You know, these buildings have, I guess, world-class infrastructure and loading docks and, and regulations and requirements, you know, hazardous material. Treatment plans associated with them, so they're highly regulated and managed. And obviously, it's a new construction project, it's really, you know, class A plus in the way the buildings are built to accommodate that, so. You know, when Grace are approaching these projects, we also think a lot about flexibility for uses that will come from a market perspective, so. For instance, in seventy-four Middlesex, we, we introduced. You know, certain, certain floors that had higher floor-to-floor heights to allow for certain manufacturing equipment, you know, for when you talk about varying uses or other things. We, we created pathways and opportunities to have that at the top of the building, we think a lot about. Ventilation and air retraining and, you know, all, all of the ventilating at the top of the building, which is, these are high-rise buildings, so they, they fall without kind of outside the area of impact, so. We, we have a full, you know, best-in-class team, including Jacobs as the lead architect and a whole host of consultants that, you know, support the design of these efforts. To have them, you know, properly designed to fit within the, the context in which it's situated, we, we see the hotel specifically, it's, it's really a. You know, a mutually supported kind of component of the, of the overall site plan, you know. Lab tenants want to use it to host guests and visitors that come to the space and the hotel will ultimately be successful based on the traffic that comes from those uses. Um, so it's a very symbiotic in relationship there.
Thank you.
A little bit, I can, you know, figure out.
Ryan, do you want, maybe Pat, I don't know if you, you want to, you want to add to that?
Sorry, finding the button there. What I just heard out of Ryan, I mean, it seemed like it was primarily hazardous material related relative to loading. Um, I would offer, when we did our transportation access plan. Um, we did provide turning diagrams showing how delivery vehicles would both enter and exit the site. And the impact internal to the site is minimized by having two full connections to and from Middlesex Avenue. By Cummings and by McGrath, so to that degree, you know, we have thought that through. And let me know if I misinterpreted the question in any way.
So thank you for the response, now, I, I think that, that's very helpful, so those are all the questions slash items that I wanted to bring up. Thank you to the applicant, and thank you, Mr. Chair, as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, one of the benefits to going later, as I'm realizing you may have already picked up on the past, is a lot of the questions I'm going to ask are already asked, so this is great. Um, I think then I will start with first by saying thank you for this presentation, I know you've already gotten some compliments on it, but I thought it was very thorough. Uh, and I definitely appreciate that you guys spent a lot of time and money pulling that together, so thank you for that. I also like to thank you for having your cameras on and actually being able to interact with us, so that's, that's also greatly appreciated. Um, so for just kind of the, the, the record and also the applicant's attention, I definitely would like to. Point back to Member Richard's comments around circulation, I think that's something that you guys rightfully focused a lot on, and I would love to see a little bit more color there. Specifically as the fellow member Richards highlighted with the interaction with the Ten Hills neighborhood. Um, so just want to kind of put that on your list as a, a second vote or a third vote there. Um, the next one I want to kind of highlight is the mobility memo, so you guys began to address that tonight, and it sounds like you intend to continue to work with the mobility division on that. So I'm not going to ask any follow-up on that, but that was by far the most important thing on my list when I went through the initial package, so please. Come back to us with a tighter answer there and hopefully with like full support of the mobility division, I do think that's going to be important. Um, so for my last block, I think I'm going to dovetail into Clerk Khabib's comments around. Utility infrastructure first under hazmat, so. This comes from a place of understanding that this is a master plan review, not a site plan review, and so I do want to, you know, at, at, at the. Offset here, highlight that I don't expect specific answers today, but what I would really like to hear is I. The applicant, you know, have thought through the various potential uses in this space, the, whether it be lab space or. You know, Greentown Labs adjacent tenants, and I have contemplated the variability in. Hazardous materials coming in and out, power electronics, other heavy equipment, you know, especially when you think of Greentown Labs, the type of. Uh, infrastructure flow there is very different than what I see in some of the other labs, and so if you're looking for that range of. Vehicles coming in and out, I would just like to make sure that the team has thought through that process, so that when we get to the site plan review, we're not. Also having to reiterate on the master plan at the same time, I just want to make sure that we're thinking through that ahead of time. And so kind of continuing above and beyond that, would love to hear you guys thoughts a bit more on. Uh, the other utilities and needs that this small development will have against the rest of the surrounding area, including. Rain and water flow, and understanding, I saw some great comments and presentations around using. Uh, plant catch basins, I'm, I'm blanking on this, the proper term, but. Starting to think about the flow of water and using nature to help mitigate some of that, I thought that was fantastic, would love to make sure that your team has just kind of put that into your initial thoughts as well. Um, I'd like to make sure that your team has at least had high-level understanding of what power demands might be and just. Maybe had a conversation with Eversource to make sure that that's all connected and that you're going to have the sufficient build that you need and that that's not going to tax. The area too much, or that you've kind of contemplated that and were able to mitigate it sufficiently. Uh, and then finally, I want to just highlight and echo the public comments tonight around concerns around. Uh, air shielding and potentially building up pollution from the surrounding. Highways, I recognize that you're not the source of the pollution, but by potentially creating a shield, you don't want to kind of make that worse, right? So just, again, none of this will be hyper-specific, because again, I recognize we're not a site plan review, but I would appreciate just some high-level comments and understanding and validation that. That's been contemplated, or not going to have to rip up this whole design when we get to the later phases, so. No questions for tonight necessarily, but you guys are welcome to answer here, this is more looking towards, you know, future meetings.
Yeah, thank you, Michael, Ryan, I'm, I want, if you. Feel free to share the magic phone number you're using to contact Eversource, but I, 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 I want, I think. It'd be interesting to hear that, and Michael, I'm going to make sure we tell them that you. Uh, you have asked us for an answer, so we can get an answer, but you, you understand also that they, you know, they'll. They'll, they'll want to look at potential phasing and timeline and we'll try to get some kind of a, a general answer. I do want to just point out, because you raised it, and I think it's important on mobility. We, and sorry to repeat myself, because I'm sure you heard it in Pat's presentation, but I, I. There's a lot of pride in the, in the six-point-five parking ratio, I haven't had any. Lab life science use to come close to that. So we're, we're trying to celebrate that, that number, I do, I won't. Negotiate, try to negotiate it here, because Justin has, has been wonderful and I think, you know, we want to sit down again, one of the things I thought about and Ryan. Um, and I talked today is, you know, do you have a scenario where like five years post-occupancy? You evaluate utilization and try to draw down that valet parking number to, to get. Get that number down, but with the valet, we're at a six-point-five, so you get to a point where you're just not. Close to being competitive with, with other lab markets in the area, but that's one idea that I had, now, you know, we'll try to. Process that, we are, you know, having worked at Cambridge Crossing and other places, I appreciate that staff has asked. For signalization, also since it's not my money, it's, it's Gray Stars, but I, I anticipated that. To just really, when you have different users trying to come in and out for safety purposes especially, so. A Gray Star has, is open to two signalizations at sort of the request of the city, so. We're not, we're not fighting that, we, we, we're trying to maintain both directions on Cummings. Um, it's kind of an important premise of us unlocking that, but. We're hoping as a whole, we can, we can get more, we can get aligned with mobility, that's just sort of, I just wanted to give you a. A primer of sort of where we are, so since you are here tonight and I have expressed interest in that piece. Ryan, do you want to, do you want to just talk about utility capacity?
Um, I, I, I probably need to revisit some notes with our civil engineer on, on those components, we'll come back, I think some of those questions were more technical in nature, so we have notes and let's circle back.
And then, and then there was one. And, and, and Michael's right, the, the benefit of kind of going at the end means that. In, in good ways and not so good ways, a lot of people have repeated the same questions, the same comments, the same. Uh, considerations for the, the application, which again, was, was very good, very thoughtful, very thorough, and I appreciate it. So what, instead of kind of raising some of my, my comments anew, because people have brought them up a number of times, one of the things I, I have thought about is. I don't know if anybody else was on the board when we permitted seventy-four Middlesex, were, were you Amelia? Yeah. Um, do you remember the, the, the comments and, and issues that we had with some of the civic space and air quality issues with, with the building so close to the highway? And how, how that was mitigated?
I remember it was a point of discussion, but I don't remember the resolution.
Yeah, where, where did we wind up on that, because it was, it was a number of years ago and. Um, Ryan, I think it was you who mentioned that we ended up discussing having civic space that was not on-site, but it was on, on a, on a separate parcel. Uh, because it just didn't make sense on, on that particular piece of land.
On, on seventy-four M, we actually built it directly south of the site, I think that the, the challenge there was that there was. It's adjacent to I ninety-three, there's no barrier blocking it, we looked at tree canopies and other things to, to create. Diffusion and keep the fine air particles that come off the highway from, from seeping into the civic space, I think this site. It goes to, you know, early-stage planning, I think through the seventy-four process, we learned a lot about. The impacts of, of fine air particles specifically from the highway and that's one of the reasons the buildings are positioned the way they are and civic spaces are interior to those buildings. Because it does create that barrier, so it's been, you know, fundamental, the site planning and. And, you know, not, not putting the civic spaces adjacent to the highway, but, but trying to move them interior and create that wall that. It's reflected, you know, the wall against the highway to block out that, that, that pollution and, you know, is consistent with the. Kind of what, what's envisioned in the neighborhood plan as well, so. Definitely, I, you know, learned a lot through the seventy-four process that we carried over this site, I guess, in Somerville.
Yeah, because, because one, one of my thoughts was. Obviously, we have the opportunity, so, you know, my, my, my concern is generally having civics, like a daycan next to a building next to the highway. Just doesn't seem like the most logical thing to, to do, right, like you got a, you got a playground next to the highways, seems, you know. Dickensian, right? Have, have you thought about either trying to move some of that civic space off, off-site or just doing a payment in lieu of, of some of the space? Because it just might not make sense with, with such proximity to, to that type of pollution where you've got, you know, children. Trying to, you know, go on a seesaw next to the highway and people drinking coffee next, next to the highway. Um, I'm just, not that the idea doesn't make sense for the way the buildings are laid out, I think you're right. But my, my concern is having civic space so next to, and, and, and with children involved particularly. Is so, so next to a, not just ninety-three, but also, you know, Middlesex Ave and the Fells Way and on the Graff Highway.
Yeah, I, I mean, our first meeting when we, when we acquired these parcels and started advancing forward to put them on a contract was with the Mississippi Fast Force, who. You know, has advocated for, for this. You know, pollution from, from the highway and its impacts on Somerville residents for decades, and I think. You know, as we positioned the building, they felt very comfortable with it, you know, they, they were one of the. The, the biggest, most vocal voices in, in how, how the seventy-four civic space laid out and how to accommodate it, and I think they ultimately. You know, found this site, site layout is favorable and then it did kind of shield, shield the highway and shield the civic space uses. Including the daycare, potential playground, forming impacts of that highway, needed conditioning in the buildings. The science is a level of detail I'm probably not terribly discussed, but it was, it was, it was the first conversation we had as we started this process and. Keeping that in the back of our mind as we, as we went through the site plan, so I do, I do want to just highlight that. They, they have been involved in the process and have been supportive of the efforts to date and, and those overall site plans to date.
Yeah, I, I was, I was, I was actually going to say, I didn't see a wig here tonight, which is, which, which, which actually kind of very much surprised me. Uh, because as I remember the discussions that we had about seventy-four, the, the issue was, I remember we were in, it was pre, it was pre-pandemic. Um, I think we're in the East Somerville School and we had a nice discussion on. Basically, the taller the building, the better the shield is from the highway, it's not necessarily the concern about. Trapping the pollution within that site and not letting it escape, it's, it's from preventing things from ninety-three and, and the highway getting onto your site. So I mean, obviously, I'm not a, I'm a scientist, I'm a lawyer, not a scientist, right? So, so I, I. Yeah, so I mean, it, it makes sense to me, I'm, I'm, the fact that they are not here to express concern and I think speaks, speaks well of the concept. I'm just having it in my mind, being like, do I want to be, you know, watching, watching, you know, kids on a playground next, next to the highway? That was, that was kind of one, two is, is again, the, the concern about the, the use, right, lab, lab space, you know, we've got so many buildings in, in Somerville that we've permitted for lab. That either haven't been built or haven't been ten, tenanted, which has kind of been an issue throughout greater Boston, it's been the subject of, you know, news articles, you know. Fairly recently, and we just. And we just had another applicant further down Mystic Avenue who had a different take on, on, on the lab tenancy. They were doing some smaller floor plate stuff. And I don't think you're doing the same thing. I think you're doing kind of a, again, I'm, I'm not a, you know, lab developer, you are. We've just seen this kind of been stymied over the last couple of years. And if this doesn't work out, I'm concerned that we're going to have a couple of vacant lots of vacant buildings for a period of years that can't easily be converted to different use outside of obviously the, the hotel space. Have you thought about how or if you would ever pivot from, from that particular use? If you're not able to secure tenants for, you know, two very big buildings?
Yeah, we, we, you know, I, I did mention earlier, we, we envision this as a long-term investment. We, we, we do not disagree that there is a dislocation in the market that is as much a supply imbalance as a demand issue, demand in the industry for community support. The, the market is oversupplied in the Boston area. There are many, many sites in the greater Boston market, there, there are many sites that, you know.
Ryan, either? Did he, did he freeze?
He must have.
Okay.
Yeah. Brian, why, oh, there he goes. Go ahead, Brian.
You, I think you froze for a moment.
Yeah.
Sorry, Ryan, you, you were talking about other, other lab sites in the Boston area.
Yeah, sorry about that. Had a computer issue. Yeah, you know, a lot of sites were developed or, or planned as lab sites. I, I think we, we go back to the infrastructure that's in and around Assembly. This is, you know, in our, our view is, is one of the true kind of class A commercial spaces in the city with the proximity to the highway, the, the orange line that runs through Assembly, all the infrastructure supporting retail and amenities that exist in Assembly. You, you know, the, the use in the industry may evolve over time, but you, you know, reflective in the neighborhood plan as well. We do, do envision this as a, you, you know, the, the, I guess the next, you know, next Cambridge Crossing down the highway, right? Is a good, is a good example to use, but it really has all the infrastructure to, to be a vibrant mixed-use hub. That's why we're continuing our investment from 74 Middlesex and translating it to the next buildings. You know, I think there's a scenario where more concentration creates success. And I, I will say the last part, we, we do have 74 Middlesex open. It's unlikely that we'd start construction on, on these projects. You know, until there's leasing momentum occurring at 74 Middlesex, we are having some good traction there. And I think that the location, the quality of the product, the quality of the infrastructure, the position within the Somerville community are all major selling points for for potential tenants. We, we do, you know, we, we see ourselves competing less so with, with other projects in Somerville and more with the Seaport and other Cambridge locations for potential tenants. So I think that reflects the long-term planning efforts that have taken place in Assembly Square over, over decades to bring it to the, the, you know, you know, mixed-use community that, that is, and we're really taking benefit of that. So we, we do view this area as unique and, and kind of different, differentiated than a lot of the lab supply in the market.
Okay. Last two points are, are two that, or at least one of which has been raised by a number of folks, both in the community and, and on the board. And, and we're in the master plan special permit phase, so we're not really too deep in the weeds on it. But when, you know, if and when we get to, to the appropriate point, I think we all do want to see how this, you know, trends through the site and connectivity to other areas within Assembly and, and outside will, will look and will work. I don't think we're at that level of detail at this stage, but that is something that, that I think we all want to see. And the last one that I'm surprised more people hadn't brought up. Now, I don't mind bigger buildings in, in this area. You know, I always thought maybe they might've been underbuilt, but there was a person who testified earlier who lives in Ten Hills and she raised the issue of, you know, shadow concerns and, and impacts on that neighborhood. And what I didn't see in your presentation and what I would like to see the next time we, we have a chance to have a chat with you is a, is a shadow study and some, and some graphics. I'd like to see how and where a building of 18, 18 stories will cast shadows as opposed to what will, what, what's currently zoned for, I think, well, was it 10? What, what can you build now?
The zoning height is 125 feet, allowed asset right and, and special permit in the Assembly. Square mixed-use district for, for additional height. So that 12 stories, that would, that would probably limit us to an eight-story building approximately. I think I, I think the intent, I don't want to talk to the intent of the zoning, but I, I will, I will flag that the Assembly Square Neighborhood Plan does, does reflect higher, higher buildings than the current asset right zoning allows within this area.
Yeah. And Brian, can I just?
Which, which is totally fine. What, what I'd like to see is a comparison of what would be allowed by right by way of a shadow study and, and what would be a shadow study for the project that you're proposing. Not to say that that's going to be dispositive, but how I look at the issue. But it, but it is informative and it is something that, that was raised that I also share a question concerning.
And Mr. Chair, can I just also respond to, to that? And this is just a, a, like a regional perspective from permitting standpoint. I don't see that base height as, as of right. I look at it, when I have, when I see a zoning district that allows for additional height by way of planning board special permit, I see that a lot differently than having a height restriction at that lower number. I just, and when you look at the FAR allowed, you, you, you really can't get to that FAR under the, under that lower height. And so if you look at what the city was trying to drive in terms of economic engine and specifically life sciences, I just don't think, there had to be an expectation that you would get beyond those heights. We're happy to, to provide the, the shadow studies that we submitted. Again, and you all know at wintertime, we're all in the dark, but I think, I think you'll, I think you'll be satisfied. I do, Mr. Chair, you always peak all the sort of big picture questions that I like to think about in terms of the civic space and air quality, because it's fascinating. I do think that, and I want to let Michael just speak briefly to this and how we've positioned the buildings. This is anecdotal and it's probably more my political sense than I would attribute to any one community member. But I think there's been a little bit of movement around civic spaces. Just in terms of as density gets built out, I think there's a little more appreciation. Notwithstanding the concerns you raise, and we, we're very familiar with, with WIG's concerns, but sort of the idea of building out Assembly and not having gathering spaces and pocket parks, I think sounded good at the beginning before it started getting built out. Now I see a little bit more of a appreciation as long as there can be some separation, building separation from direct impacts. But I have seen a little bit of a change from back. We have an, I have another, there's another project that got a civic space variance. And even from the time we talked about 74, so I would just, just say that. Michael, do you have anything to add in terms of position of the buildings in relation to the highway and civic space? Unmute, Mike.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, just, just very at a high level, because I, I know the hour is getting late here and we don't want to get in the weeds. But either somebody wants to put the plan up that like Laura's second plan, and I don't want to take her thunder, but that, that's probably not a bad drawing. So what, what we did very, you know, obviously deliberately was not only think about, again, the massing as we went on, you know, at the, at the perimeter or at the, the curve of the site, but how do we, you know, willfully and deliberately make these spaces useful? And, and then how do we program them because they are kind of, you know, they're very interesting and particularly civic space one. So we, I think you can just see, you know, the, the reality is what the, the good news about civic space one, it's completely and very intentionally detached from the highway. If you're in there, you'd never know there was a highway on the other side of that building. You wouldn't hear it, you wouldn't see it. And I'm not going to go out on a limb and say you wouldn't smell it, but you probably wouldn't. So that's the good news because we're trying to create obviously a very inviting habitat for people of, and, and you can see Laura has a lot of different kinds of uses that I think they're thinking are candidates. One of which was the, the daycare could be in there as well. So just to address your concern, which certainly is a, a good one and appropriate one, is that just the, the idea of, of a space like that obviously needs to be very secure as, as required by law, but also, you know, best practice. It needs to be secure, but it also needs to be inviting. And of course it needs to be enriching. And again, not near a highway or, or some other, you know, kind of use that really is, is not really enhancing to the use. So I think that, that's, that's how that space is envisioned to work, that there, there in fact, the building really does help that space become much more, you know, useful and enjoyable.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. So I think we're to good bless the Amelia.
Here, can I ask one question of staff before we wrap up on this topic for the evening?
Yeah, of course.
Am I right to understand that the Assembly Square, the updated Assembly Square Plan has not yet been adopted formally?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Vice Chair Avoff, Andrew Grominsky, Planner, Plan Preservation, Zoning. Vice Chair Avoff, that is correct. We're, we're still making some movement to make some final touches to the draft plan, which is still available on Summer Voice for those who want to see it. Not much has changed for this section of the neighborhood. Most of what we've been looking at is the Home Depot site. So what's called for right now in the draft plan is, is still the same as it's been for the past few years.
So for the purposes of reviewing this application, I recall the feedback on that plan being largely positive. From, from OSPC's perspective, are we treating that plan as the direction that the city, understanding that we still need to adopt it as does the council? But is there any other framework that you would give us as far as using that plan as the framework document for this neighborhood as we review this application?
Great question. You're, you're correct. This is the document that we want the boards to be looking at when examining these development proposals. Yes, from a technical standpoint, the, the 2000 Assembly Square Plan still stands as sort of that policy document. However, things change, planning processes are living in terms of how things are done. These documents are living documents. In that sense, the sort of update is you can think is sort of just a accumulation of what is left in Assembly to be developed. So Middlesex Ave, for example, isn't highlighted in the earlier renditions of the Assembly Square Neighborhood Plan. Now we make more emphasis on that corridor as an area where there's more commercial development, taller buildings next to the highway. So this is something that we as staff looked at when examining the proposal was the current draft plan. That's hopefully will be adopted by you in the near future.
Thank you very much. If you think there are any modifications that have been made by staff since, since the draft version that's available online and which was presented, that it would be, that, that would be informative to the board as we consider this, would you give that some thought as to whether there are one or two slides that you would want us to be aware of sort of impending changes? Or, or whether we really should assume that sort of this corner of the site remains largely unaffected by the, by those edits?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I will have to connect with some colleagues. Like again, I, I don't believe really much has changed, but I will make, I will do my due diligence and make sure that that is actually fact.
Thank you. I don't want to create homework assignment, but I appreciate.
That's all, that's fine. And then if there is any sort of changes that are necessary or maybe information that would be helpful for you, I'll make sure to put something together for the next meeting or down the road.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
All right. It is 12:09. A little longer than I was expecting by, by about 40 minutes. And some of that was certainly me, so I apologize because we're all hungry and tired. And it's been dark for about five hours already, so. Does anybody else have anything they would like to add for the good of the meeting? If you do, I'm still really not going to recognize you because it is late. Seeing none, I'm going to welcome you guys back in a few weeks. So I'm going to continue you to the 19th and we'll see where we're at on the 19th. We, I do not, I'm not going to say this officially, I do not believe we're going to have a meeting on January 2nd. I think most of us will not be around on January 2nd. So I think the first meeting in January will likely be, I think it's the 16th, but don't, don't go me on that. So with, with that in mind, the chair moves to adjourn, seconded by Amelia. Steve, can you please call the role?
As our Steve Carey in the Planning Division, I think we need an official motion to continue this to the 19th first.
Okay, let's continue it to the 19th, seconded by Amelia.
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Amelia Abah?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Aye. Agenda items continued to the 19th. Motion to adjourn, seconded by Amelia.
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Amelia Abah?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much. See you in a few weeks.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.